I realize, actually, I don't know what I'm supposed to say to start the meeting.
Welcome, everyone.
Oh, thank you.
Let everyone know that it's being recorded.
There we go. Do we need to do that opening blurb or no?
No, you just need to let everyone know that it's being recorded.
Great, okay. Well, good evening, everybody.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to our planning board Monday, uh, planning board meeting for Monday, June 26, 2023. This meeting is being recorded. And we'll start with public comment. Do we have any members of the public or in the waiting room?
Nope.
Well, that was easy. Next on the agenda is a public hearing for Lot A 524 Northfield Road. Looking for a modification to a stormwater permit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You need to read the advertisement.
Oh.
I think I found it, sorry.
Okay.
My computer's real slow today. Um, 524 Northfield, okay, perfect. The Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on June 26, 2023 at 6:05 PM Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To hear and review a modification to a stormwater management permit under Chapter 204 of the Code of the Town of Lunenburg for Lot A at 524 Northfield Road, parcel number 039-0032-00. Applicant and owner are Prolim Development Corporation at 12 Baywoods Drive in Shirley, Mass. A 1464. Materials are available for viewing at the planning office at 960 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. So, just for record, Justin Leclerc, McCarty Engineering, here on behalf of Prolim tonight. So, we just wanted to come back in front of you since the last time we were here for the original stormwater permit application. Lot A has been modified slightly, just based on number of changes. We wanted to come back to you and have you guys aware of what's been going on and just get your approval on it. So, the first change, probably the most dramatic change, was there was a revised septic plan that was submitted by Northland Engineers. The septic system was raised approximately two to three feet. We weren't involved in the septic design, so I don't know what the reasoning behind it, but the revised plan we got from the Shobo Board of Health had that change. The new owner, seeing the change, asked if we can modify the site to eliminate the mound that would be in the back of the house. So, as such, we did change Lot A to be raised approximately two to three feet. The original garage elevation was 106, we're up at 109 now. As part of it, the potential buyer of the house did have a custom footprint of a house that's actually smaller than the original box that we proposed. The original box was approximately 2,100 square feet in size. This proposed house is now 1,900 square feet in size or so. So, the other thing with that was the garage doors are now located on the side of the house, not in the front. The original plan, you drove in straight from Northfield Road, right into the garage. Now, as you can see on this plan, we come in, we maintain the curb cut on Northfield Road, but now it's a side load. So, we had to shift the angle of the driveway a little bit, adjust the grading, to be able to get the car to come onto the site and pull into the garage. We did look at the wall quality volumes that we did provide as part of the original approval. We're still meeting those in the rain garden and the piece on diaphragm. And as an extra level of protection, you can see on the right-hand side of the driveway, we did add an additional piece on diaphragm to treat the one-inch wall quality as well. Lastly, we did shift the rain garden about 40 feet to the left of where it originally was, just to provide a better front yard. Now that the house changed, it was a different shape. So, when you drive by the lot now, you'll see the rain garden's gonna be offset to the house, not dead center of the house like it was before. We did submit the plan, the letter, more quality calcs to Graves Engineering, and Jeff Walsh did get back to us this afternoon. It was this morning saying that he found no issue with the calculations provided. So, if you guys have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Adam, I had in my notes that we hadn't heard from Mr. Walsh yet.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, so, could you confirm that that's...
Yes, he did, he did. I reached out to him this morning to see if he had seen it. He had been off a little bit last week. He sent me an email, um, I think just before lunch today, indicating that it looked good to him. Let's see. Uh, yeah, it came in. I guess it was later in the day than that, it was 3:39. Nope, that's Justin's. But he did send it today, I do have it.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Um, no. Everything looking through here seems, I don't see any particular issues.
So, Adam, in a request for a modification, is there anything else we need to be aware of, other than Mr. Walsh says this is good, if we have no questions on our own?
No, I mean, because really, it's a, I would call it a minor modification. You're not increasing the footprint of the house, you're not drastically altering the site. I didn't think it qualified as de minimis change, because there's a movement of the BMPs, there's the addition of the BMP. There's more butuminous, but with a smaller house and with the added filter, I thought it rose to this level. So, other than that, you would need to offer public comment at a public hearing. And if the board had other comments or questions, I would recommend that if the board is going to act positively on this, that they include all conditions of the previous permit as conditions of the modified permit. But other than that, I don't think that there's anything particularly different about the, the plan.
All right.
I have, I have...
Please.
So, you moved three feet vertical, so, in the same footprint, so, obviously, you've got steeper, steeper slopes. Was your time of concentration or your, your, your path recalculated or looked at at all?
It wasn't drastically altered, so, instead of having, even though we came up three feet vertical, we did stretch out the slopes a little bit more. So, instead of having a flatter front yard, it's more of a gradual slope, where before we were more steeper where our slopes were. So, where we are flat and we came down sharp, we spread that out a little bit more. So, you're, you didn't see a drastic change in the TC. I don't have the exact TCs off the top of my head, but it wasn't, it wasn't anything to alter the pre-post.
But was it recalculated?
I do have it in the office.
That's not answering my question. So, this was originally five lots, and the stormwater permit was issued in one of the driveways, I think we had to require an easement to maintain the stormwater controls?
Yes, that's the driveway on the adjacent two lots?
Not adjacent to this lot, but also was the problem of not meeting, uh, not, not totally meeting, and it was okay because it was single-family houses, they didn't have to fully meet the stormwater conditions? And I was just curious, you, three feet elevation on that size lot would...
It didn't make a change, it didn't make a drastic change, that we would have had to add additional volume or anything like that for the pre-post.
And what was the additional control?
So, on the right-hand side of the driveway?
Oh, the additional, yeah.
So, um, this is the original plan, and it just has the one diaphragm on this side.
Mm-hmm.
And the proposed plan adds the diaphragm. What happened here? Did I close it?
Well, that'll be useful when the road, when the driveway doesn't pitch the way they say it's going to, then it'll, it's not center crowned, I assume, right? It's constant slope?
No, it's pitched to one side.
I can show Mr. Allison on here while I'm looking it up. This is the changed plan.
Oh, it is center crowned, interesting. Well, the grading shows it's center crowned.
Yeah. Well, and now it is because it has the diaphragm on either side.
And the reason we did the grade in that way was because we had the angle in the driveway now, so it was a little bit more difficult to get a majority of the driveway to that one side.
Yep, thank you.
All right. I would offer public comment as well to any members of the public, if they're available and wish to speak.
We did have someone join us on Zoom, they're titled "Observer," so I don't see a hand raised or the microphone live, but...
So, "Observer," if you, oh, yeah, I say, exactly, that "Observer," as labeled in Zoom, if you do want to speak, go ahead and, uh, use the hand raise feature to let us know. And, uh, otherwise, I'll turn to the board for any more comments or questions or concerns?
No, nothing additional.
I don't have anything.
All right. Okay, in which case, I would accept a motion if anyone wishes to make one.
I move to close the...
Oh, do we have to close the public hearing first? See, you know what we're doing.
You do too.
In case I would, I would, uh... Nothing, no move from "Observer," correct?
No.
Okay. I would accept a motion to close the public hearing, so moved.
Second.
All right, and we don't need a roll call vote, because everyone's here.
Everyone's here.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. Did you say aye, Mr. Allison?
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear it, okay.
I'll speak up next time.
No worries. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well.
And now we deliberate and vote, correct?
Correct.
Any other deliberation on the topic?
No.
In which case, I would be looking for a motion.
I move that we approve the storm mod, modification to a stormwater permit for Lot A 524 Northfield Road with the previous conditions, uh, as stated on the previous stormwater permit, and, um, as well to conform to the current plan presented.
I will second.
All right, movement is seconded, and, uh, we'll have a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. That's unanimous? And we can just move on, correct? Great. That is our public hearing, I should get on the correct slide. And next up is the right of first refusal for parcel four on Lemmonster Road, continuing this discussion. Do we have any new information, Mr. Allison?
Yes and no. We don't have any new official information. The Open Space Committee did meet on the 16th, um, but they didn't officially meet because they didn't have a quorum. So, they had a general discussion. There were three members present, and the consensus was no consensus. So, some members felt that it was worthwhile to, uh, for the town to get the parcel appraised for purchase, uh, as a way to protect wetlands and to prevent, um, potential nutrient loading or other harmful things to the, the wetlands. Others felt that while that was a noble goal, it was not, uh, the probably most impactful parcel to spend political and fiscal resources, um, pursuing. And there was a third perspective that perhaps they should try to work with the property owner to find a way to, uh, balance those two things. But there, uh, the minutes are in your folder, if I recall correctly, the, um, the consensus was that they didn't have a consensus and didn't feel that they had a, a va, viable recommendation at this time.
Just a simple point of order, um, there was not a quorum, so there should not have been minutes, and there should not have been technically a meeting. So, any of the information that we just heard was hearsay at best.
Correct.
And, uh, as I, we, I don't believe we have any minutes as well.
There was a document generated by the Open Space Committee. And, and you will note, it says there was no quorum, this was for discussion purposes only.
Yep.
All right. What is our timeline on, because I know we have to act within a certain...
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would recommend that the board make a decision and, and forward that to the select board, or I think you're gonna run out of the opportunity to have a, a, a recommendation put forward. With the clock running, uh, the 120 days goes very quickly if, um, if you're not paying attention. And where this is a change of use and not a qualified offer, the town needs to retain services of an appraiser in order to move forward with the purchase, if that's the direction that, that anybody feels is where they wanna go or what they wanna do. And right now, we are just over 30 days in.
Okay.
So, question on that? The appraisal has to be done within the 120?
Yes. The whole, the whole process needs to be completed in the 120.
Two months left.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Three months left.
I would, uh, so I would turn to the board and ask your thoughts on what we may wanna do about this. We could theoretically wait, but it sounds like that ticking clock is gonna put us in a place that our opinion may not matter, uh, and we could yea nay or wait. Or something else I haven't thought of, but...
Well, considering the hearsay of the meeting that shouldn't have happened, um, it sounds like it was split three ways from the membership that was there of a seven-member committee. Myself, the, that would be my committee report coming up later, I could give that now. I was, I was not present, I was not, uh, able to make that meeting. I did, however, do some, some, some homework on it and looked at it. It does, it, it seems to me at least four, if not five, of the seven qualifiers that the Open Space came up with, um, of which I believe the lane property had six or seven, had, I think the lane property had all of them.
That was just before...
Just before.
They were, they were finalizing the purchases, I started working here.
It's 12.8 acres, um, if, if you, if you think about it, at, uh, $40,000 an acre, that's probably half, half a million?
Just about.
Ish?
Yeah.
So, um, and, and as has been said previously, the, the Catacunimog is already protected by the Wilderness Protection Act and numerous other state protections. It's got a very limited access off of Lancaster Ave. That's just...
Lemmonster Road.
Lemmonster Road, I'm sorry.
Just so no one's confused at home.
Yes, yes, yes.
I knew what you meant.
I'm glad, I'm glad you corrected me, Lemmonster Road. And, and I, and I do think that there is a guardrail along the entirety of the frontage, or...
Uh, if not the entirety, like 97% of it.
And, and wasn't that one of the qualifiers for illusory frontage?
It is an indicate, uh, a guardrail is an indicator that frontage may be illusory, but by itself, so, it's a good hint to look deeper, but by itself, it is not a limiting factor.
So, I mean, even if the town did wanna purchase it, it's, it's questionable at best at this point whether we would be able to access it off of Lemmonster Road, and that being the only access point, might not be a good idea, but again, I haven't expressed my opinion at all, I just, these are the facts that I gained for the homework that I did for the meeting that I missed.
Well, it's also a time to share our opinions on the board as well, yours or anyone else's. I will ask a question, Mr. Allison. What, I'm curious, I don't need the precise blow-by-blow necessarily, but what are the criteria that the Open Space Committee uses for evaluation, and which ones does that, this hit?
I should have done more homework.
I, I'll take a rough guesstimate, too, I'm just trying to get a feeling myself.
Is that what's listed in the minutes here?
I think it is, yeah.
There you go, yeah.
50 acres, does it contain important wildlife habitat, um, rare species, uh, provides public access recreation, important scenic resource, uh, contiguous to other open spaces? I think that's...
And supports local agricultural viability.
So, there's four of them that it does hit, because there was, there were unique soils and prime farm soils, as well as, um, prime forest soils in the forested area. There, it does seem to be, the forested area has, has a neck around the wetland system, but it does seem to be able to, at least on plan, without looking at the contours, provide physical access to the rear of the property. I don't believe that it abuts anything that's currently protected, and it's not 50 acres. So, those two are out. I don't believe it had any AC/EC on it, but it does have a cold water fishery, which is, which is habitat. So, I mean, it, it's got interesting features and as well, it's, it's got some challenges, so... And as far as the 500,000, that's probably less, so the $40,000 an acre is probably lower than developable land right now in Lunenburg, but the 90% of the developable value is what's considered agricultural value typically. So, 40,000 or 4,000, so right now would probably be 60,000 or 6,000, give or take, which would cut the acquisition cost down considerably, but, um, again, given, given the toss-up at the Open Space, um, I would be reluctant personally to make a decision on our own, because we did, this group, this body, not necessarily these members, did create the Open Space for this kind of an input to our decision, but as well, we have the decision and the select board has the, basically the final say?
Ultimately, it's the select board's decision formed by this body, conservation and...
All right. I've heard from one board member, are there other opinions out there, one way or another?
I mean, is there a harm in getting an appraisal and, and, I mean, reading the meeting that wasn't a meeting notes? I'm not quite well-versed on the subject, but...
No, I mean, it's just money.
Right.
It's really, and that's...
Just the cost of it.
What, what, is there a harm in getting an appraisal? No. The only harm is you need to pay for it.
Sure.
So, there's the, the procurement of hiring an appraiser and going through that process. The, I don't know what, I mean, I know if you go to get a mortgage, your appraisal's like 500 bucks, I don't think it's the same on a piece of vacant land that the town's looking to buy. But under procurement laws, if it's 10,000 or less, you do best business practices. If it's 10 to 50,000, you can do it through, uh, three phone or written quotes. So, you, you know, we're not talking about a, an RFP, having to craft length, I mean, I don't think we're gonna tip $50,000 for it.
Right.
But it's still, it's probably 2,500 to 5,000, it's just a matter of where does it come from and, um, but again, that's not your problem to figure out.
Sure.
Your problem is, is, does this have planning value to the town, and do you think that it should be explored? Now, you could tell the select board that, and they could say, huh, that's great, we're gonna do what we want.
Sure.
But at least you've given them the information to think about.
I have a question on what we're looking at, is, 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 that wetland line doesn't look like it does provide access from Lemmonster Road to the back portion of the property. Am I thinking of a...
It does not.
It doesn't?
No. So, this, this would be two sep, this would be two separate lots. Now, the argument could be made that if the town were to claim this, there is a limited project here in order to access through the wetland, because the town did not create a hardship.
Okay. Okay, so that, that, yeah, so I did misspeak, the wetland does completely...
And again, I don't know when this wetland survey was done, and I don't think it says on this plan, unless that really, really tiny words up in the corner say that. Not frickin', yeah, I can't even read it. Wetland delineation... Wow, yeah. It's like trying to read the posters in a video game. I don't know if it's legible on the paper copy.
I'm not sure.
That's the paper copy right there, I think you had your hand on it.
This one? That was the driveway, that was the stormwater.
Oh, yeah. She did label all of the...
Right of first refusal. There we go.
Wow.
She came back and she said, "I did this, is that okay?" I said, "I think it will be okay." Yeah. Arm's not long enough?
Same basic land information from on-the-ground survey by blah, blah, blah. Wetland delineation is from 2022.
Oh, okay.
And supplemented from online GIS.
So, I mean, I, I would say that line is squishy at best.
Were the survey from 2022...
Well, if they're saying the delineations from 2022 supplemented by online GIS, that...
Got it.
I mean, I would suspect that this portion here that's hiding behind the observer is probably the portion that's the newest, but, um, also, I don't wanna wildly speculate or anything.
Fair. So, you think, you think an appraisal's gonna be 25 to 5,000 dollars?
I'm, I'm guessing from my recollection of the last time that we talked about potentially doing this.
The last time I remember was 500 to 1,000 dollars, but it's been a few years.
I mean, even at 5,000 dollars, I don't think that's a wildly expensive thing for the town to do if they feel it's the appropriate. It's not like it's a, I mean, it's still within the best business practices, and I'm probably overestimating, I tend to be conservative in that.
My, uh, my personal thought on this is I just, I struggle to see the use for the town in it, um, where the wetlands should theoretically be protected regardless, and it's not really a big enough parcel that it's gonna end up with, I wouldn't, I would anticipate it ending up with recreational value, and I'm open to being corrected on that thought. And I just don't, I, I'm a, personally, a huge fan of let's protect everything we can, I just don't see, especially where the inner lot kind of becomes undevelopable currently. I, I don't see a, myself, a big re, a big need, but I also hear Mr. Allison's point that we have a group that we created as a board in part to give us feedback on this. They've been unable to give us feedback, so there may be some value in saying we simply do not have an opinion to the select board.
I do have another question.
Please.
And back to the limited project status. So, currently, the current owner of the property has created their own hardship and would not be eligible to apply as a limited project for that parcel?
That would be my understanding.
Now, if they sold it to a third party, would that third party then be eligible to apply for the limited project for the wetland crossing?
I think that's a little more in the weeds on the Wilderness Protection Act than I, I'm qualified to answer right now.
Okay.
And I think to the chair's point, this larger interior parcel here, I believe is intended to be accessed from the frontage on Sunny Hill. So, there is five, 615... So there is five, 615 feet, which is enough for six lots if you are able to make everything else work. I mean, I think in reality, you have four lots here. You have the three that were originally intended, and then you have one retreat lot.
I, I was thinking that that lot that was granting frontage wasn't going to be able to give frontage from that road for some reason, but clearly I manufactured that, so.
But so I mean, essentially what you end up with is almost 13, 14, 18-ish acres with 600 feet of frontage. And so in reality, I, I know the builder, he's told me he intends to build four houses there. He was trying to work out something where he could get sewer. Sewer doesn't go up Sunny Hill, so they'll all be on septic. So I don't think there's the possibility to, to fit anything else there, never mind that it is all but a cliff once you get about 100 feet in.
Oh, I hate making these decisions without topo here. It is what it is.
We can get there.
Oh, that would be amazing. I'm, I'm just trying to envision what I'm looking at.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding some of the bits here. We are looking to see if the town wants to purchase this land as opposed to somebody developing lots on it, developing houses on it.
Correct.
And there is a limited amount of space with which they can actually build houses.
Correct.
Okay. And assumedly, at that point, whatever space they don't build on or can't build on, what happens to that? Is that just up to the landowner's discretion?
Yeah, I mean, they own it still. It's still their land. So.
I just wasn't sure what there was in terms of.
You know, we've got this, this, there's a, let me get back to it. There's this mystery portion of parcel two, which is 11.4 acres, that is essentially a swamp. If you drive down Lemmonster Road, you look and you're like, hey, look, that's a swamp. And that's this right here. Like I half expect the swamp thing to crawl, crawl out of it in, in the, the late spring. So they're retaining ownership of that, but for how long? And, you know, at what point did they come and say, hey, town, you want 11 acres of swamp? Or did, what point did they stop paying taxes? Or is the intent to see if one of these other people wants a whole bunch of swamp? That's, that's an open question. But all of the, the rest of the land would, theoretically, you would be creating buildable lots that you think are useful to you and that people will be interested in. So here is your topo, Mr. Chair. Might be easier for you to see here.
Probably.
So this is the frontage on Sunny Hill.
Okay.
And as you see, it goes down, 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 down.
Oh, yeah, that's a, you weren't kidding about being kind of a cliff there.
Oh, I mean, like, this is the hill you wanted to go to as a kid when it was time to sled, other than all the trees.
Now, is that a valley?
This is a valley, yes. So if you've ever driven up Sunny Hill? This is right near the hairpin. And unfortunately, I've got the two-foot contours on, so it's just, so this is where you come up that hill and you bang right around. And I mean, this house here is a, a walkout. I think most of them are. You can see here along the back of this house, this is on the flat spot at the end of Elm Street. This is that big old farmhouse at the top of Elm Street. And I mean, beyond their house, it just falls off. And so most of these houses have done either filling or they happen to grab the toe of this slope before it traversed further down. I mean, this is all very steep through here.
So if we were to go back to the frontage in question, yeah, as it loads at its own pace.
Oh, you mean to?
Oh, no, we could do, we could do either map. I'm not picky at this point. But my underst-, so it goes downhill and then goes uphill again? Or is that all downhill?
Yes, no. So on Lemmonster Road, so this parcel touches, there's, there's a newer house there. It's white. It's actually probably one of the more distinct new houses that I've seen built around. It looked like somebody actually went and picked out a specific plan rather than took which one the builder had chosen. But so this here is a flattish spot, and then it goes down into the swamp. So Lemmonster Road is at a height above this area through here, as is this. So it, I mean, it is the riverbed.
If I may?
Please.
So I'm, I'm not quite sure how far the select board has gotten through the, the 2-point-something million they have in ARPA funding. Do they still have some change left that they haven't allocated?
I think right now they have given out about 1.8. I think they have like 1.5-ish.
Would an assessment be an eligible use for that money? I think we can do whatever we want with it at this point.
That's my, I, I think that's my understanding.
So maybe we should.
I think they have about 4 million in requests in front of them right now.
They do, yep. Well, I don't know that it's that much, but yes, they have far more than they have available. I don't know. Again, I don't see a great use for it. So here's my opinion is I don't see a great use for it. There are some qualities that would qualify for quite usable space, but again, with the guardrail and the steep slopes and the accessibility, it's going to come at a cost that it may or may not be worth because there are plenty of other properties that, that would be more valuable, like the 24-acre orchard that just got turned into eight houses across the street from my house. That would have been a great thing. So I, I personally don't see a lot of use for it. I mean, it, it does, it does kind of more than halfway hit the criteria for the open space that they had selected, but it by far meets all of them. Does not by far.
All right. It's not a public hearing, but we can solicit public comment, correct?
You can, that's completely up to you.
If there's any members of the public who dish, do wish to chime in on this, we welcome your feedback as well in general, so put up your hand, please, but we'll continue our conversation, assuming we won't see that. The name observer leads me to believe probably not going to participate. Other thoughts from the board?
Yeah. Mr. Allison, so your, your contention is that this is not worth the town purchasing or the direction that it seems to be going for you?
Given, given, yeah, given the temperature of the town at this point, it, it is currently protected and, and most people are going to say, well, that's good enough, somebody else is paying tax on it, why should we buy it? Bottom of the line, I think that that's what the majority of the people, that's what I'm here to represent, the majority of the people in town. It's my opinion that the majority of people in town would not support the acquisition of that. Did that fully answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, good, good.
Is it, thank you.
So eventually, we need a motion on what we're going to do, recommend for the select board, correct?
Yeah, unless the board just is going to choose to take no action and let the select board make their decision based on, what they make their decision based on.
We don't need a motion to make no decision, though.
No.
Okay.
Motion's always just memorialize everything.
Then, but.
If no one's going to make a motion to make a recommendation, then eventually the discussion ends and.
But we could also have a motion to just do nothing.
Correct.
Great, okay. That, that's.
Yeah, just my, the, the bit that I'm trying to go through here, essentially, we and the Conservation Commission and the open space are the kind of parties giving the recommendation to the select board.
Well, the open space is, just to correct, my understanding is the open space.
Is a portion of the planning.
Yeah, is the, is, so.
Okay.
They tell, they give us their opinion, then we make, we make the recommendation.
Gotcha, okay. All right. And, and that's essentially, the thing that we've been waiting on is that the recommendation from the open space so that we can then make our recommendation to the select board. Okay. And currently, what we have is a not official, didn't happen meeting in which it seems to be, this doesn't necessarily meet the requirements that open space is looking for to give an affirmative recommendation. I'm just trying to piece together what it is that I, it seems to be coming together.
I, my personal characterization of the, of the notes we've heard from that discussion would be that there is not agreement, which is.
Okay.
Which I would view as different than, does not necessarily meet.
Sure.
But I would say, because I, I get the impression some feel it does, some feel it does not.
Sure. Mine was primarily just going upon the, where they gave a quick run-through of their criteria. And it just, it appeared to be more no's than yeses was where I was getting that from. But okay.
Discussion seems to have petered off, so I, I would look for a motion and that could be, I mean, again, yay, nay, or not, or no opinion, no, from the planning board.
If the town makes a decision, yes, we want to purchase this land, how long does that take? Like from that moment of we're going to go forward with it to it being done? Because I know we're looking at like 90 days remaining on our 120.
Yep.
What is the point that we have to have a decision to still be under that 120?
I don't know.
All right.
And, and I don't know because there, I don't think there is a good answer. I mean, really, you need to be able, in, in a lot of instances, you need to be able to call a town meeting in order to raise an appropriate funds to pay for this.
Okay.
If, and I think that that's like, it takes 45 days to be able to do that, but you also then have to have the money and close and, I mean, it's a really like, it's a tight, tight timeline.
Yeah.
But if they were so inclined to say, hey, let's take rainy day money, let's take, you know, special purpose stabilization, let's take ARPA money and let's get crazy and buy this land, then maybe none of that is, is relevant.
Okay.
Normally, they would want, at the 30-day mark, to be putting out their, their appraisal and know what the cost is so they can then make a determination from there. It's vacant land, one would think an appraisal wouldn't take a wild amount of time, but.
Sure.
It's still probably 14 to 21 days once you've hired someone.
Sure.
And so again, you're then rolling down, the time is ticking, 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 ticking away.
So if we say, yes, let's go forward with an appraisal, we have that appraisal at about the halfway mark of what we're looking for?
Well, we would tell the select board.
Well, okay, sure.
And then they don't meet until July 11th.
Okay.
Because of the holiday and this is their off week and so it's.
Yeah.
And if I'm not mistaken, they, they have struggled to complete all of their agenda items at their last few meetings based on ARPA discussions going late into the evening and some of the more ministerial and, you know, maybe not time-sensitive things have been just continued. So I don't know that this is, I, I don't recall seeing this even be addressed.
Sure. So if we did try and move forward, we would be in the second half.
Yes.
Before anything actually started moving.
Okay. Or at least rolling towards the second half.
Yes.
And my understanding is our recommendation is basically yay or nay, move forward, not let's get an appraisal and see what, like, I mean, this is our one opportunity for.
Yeah, I mean, you're, yeah, yeah. If you say you think you, they, that it's important and the town should take it, then that would be your recommendation to them and the appraisal would, because you're, you, what you're essentially saying is you think that there's value in it from the planning board's perspective, because you're supposed to look at this agnostic of cost. Because it's not about what the money is, it's about, here, our argument is this value is this. You know, it, it provides the, a potential significant community space. It provides room for this, it provides this natural barrier, that, you know, whatever it happens to be that you see as valuable from a planning perspective.
All right.
And then it's up to them to figure out the money.
Again, I will, if at any point someone wishes to make a motion, I'm happy to take one. I see some thought as well, what looks to be thought going on as well.
I mean, I'm not sure if, if we need to make a motion or not. I mean, I, I don't necessarily have an opinion either way. I feel like the meeting that wasn't really a meeting provided some details that made it seem like the land wouldn't necessarily be something viable for the town to own. It's not necessarily in the central location, it doesn't really provide a lot of opportunities for recreation. As Mr. Allison said, part of it is protected already, so I'm not quite sure if Lunenburg should throw its hat in the ring. I think it should go to the select board, but I mean, if people want to make a motion either way, I, I'm fine. I just don't personally sway either way.
Okay.
So, excuse me, I'll, I'll move that we table our recommendation until the open space can give us their recommendation and leave it open for a second if that's chosen.
A second.
All right. So all in favor of tabling until the open space can give us their recommendation? And that would be just radio silence effectively to the, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. All in favor of tabling until the open space can give us their opinion?
Aye.
Aye.
You're already outvoted, dude.
Yeah, yeah. I'm a nay.
Okay.
But.
Duly noted.
Yep.
Right?
All right, very good.
If I may?
Please.
What would your motion have been? If you're against that one?
I, I think I would have, I think I would have preferred to come to a conclusion tonight, even if that conclusion is to, we formally do not have an opinion, as opposed to waiting for the open space, which likely is, to me, seems like it's going to happen too late in the process. But that's, I mean, we're really in the weeds on semantics on that one. I probably also would have, if, if someone had moved to not, to say no, I probably would have been swayed in that direction too, truthfully. But not a hard, frankly, not a hard on anything on this, because in some ways, dang if I know.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. Let me call up the agenda. And next item on our agenda is appointments. appointments for seven fifty-seven Chase Road, they're looking for a site plan approval and stormwater permit extension.
They are, this is the Subaru dealership, and you should have a letter in your packet on behalf of the Empire Management Corporation, applicant-owner-land-design collaborative, excuse me, submitting a request for an additional one-year extension to the site plan approval and stormwater permit that was filed with the town clerk on July thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and extended until June twenty-twenty-two. The permit was granted for the construction of a new Subaru dealership at the location of the existing Subaru dealership at seven five seven Chase Road. Due to the escalating construction cost, shortage of skilled laborers, and the current shortage of automobile inventory, the construction commencement has been delayed. We trust that you find this information acceptable, and we thank you in advance for your attention to this site plan approval and stormwater permit extension, we look forward to meeting with the board at your next available public hearing. Please feel free to contact me should you have any questions or wish to discuss.
All right.
Signed, James Almonte.
And procedurally, we don't need a hearing or anything to grant an extension, do we?
No.
Okay, so this.
It's a ministerial act by the board.
So this, if we, if this is something the board chose to do, we would be able to just do it tonight? Okay, great, I just wanted to make sure I understood that. All right. I remember them coming before us with these plans a, a good bit ago, and, Mike, I guess one of, I have a question, and I don't know what questions the rest of the board has as well. Have any lo, ha, have any laws or rules changed since we've, like, relevant ones, since we've approved this, and what, if they have? Thinking stormwater and everything, because I know there's been some stormwater tweaking. What is that, how do we typically handle that? Because we kind of approved with, with a certain expectation, I understand their logic why, I didn't know where that goes from there.
I don't know, there hasn't been any stormwater changes.
Okay.
Because they came in under the new stormwater.
All right.
With the, with the ninety-twenty, or the ninety, the ninety-sixty. I mean, I think that probably the biggest change is the parking calculations. And that potentially could have worked to their benefit, I don't, I'd have to sit down and, and calc it out. But that's the one that, that I think jumps out at me.
So essentially, they're just coming in, this, this board approved back in twenty-one.
Correct.
And they're just, hey, we haven't used it.
Correct.
We just want to make sure it's still cool that we have this approval.
We want to, yeah, they want to keep the, the approval going.
Site plan approvals are for two years.
Correct.
Correct, yeah, and so, they, they came in, they gave their presentation, and said why they were looking at doing their upgrade the dealership, and gave all.
Yeah.
And ran all that by us arbitrarily, I remember retaining while discussing where I learned some things. Yep, and now they're back saying, couldn't do it yet.
Okay, and, and to your investigation, there shouldn't necessarily be any major changes to what is required for stormwater requirements?
Correct.
Potentially even in their favor with, regarding how, like, impermeable, like, parking lots have been calculated?
No, that was the parking lo, the, the, the parking, the parking bylaw.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it was, it was just how many parking spaces they needed for.
Gotcha.
Which use and.
Okay, I conflated the two, all right.
So, if I may, the, the other thing that I remember being somewhat unique to that was it was, it was one piece of land, but they were getting the permit for a certain portion of it?
Yes, so it's the, the Subaru dealership and the Nissan dealership are on the same piece of land.
One parcel, right.
And they had a denoted limit of work around the Subaru dealership that, so I guess functionally, the way they operate the parcel, so it, it's, it's multiple parcels owned by a single entity, they function as a single parcel because of the way it's laid out. And what they were proposing to do was work within the bubble of the lot that had previously been just the Subaru dealership. But with some improvements that would benefit the Mazda dealership for circulation and truck traffic.
All right, do we have any other questions or discussion on this? Do any members of the public want to chime in? Hearing done, and it sounds like our discussion is done, I would look for a motion on, what's the law?
Seven five seven Chase Road.
Thank you, on, on seven fifty-seven Chase Road, on the, on extending the site plan approval and stormwater permit, or not?
I'll move that we approve a one-year permit extension for site plan approval and stormwater permit for seven five seven Chase Road.
I'll second.
All right, moved and seconded, and we'll take a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is all set, they have their extension. Is there any paperwork we need to do for that tonight, or is that?
I know, I'll just, I'll send them a letter.
Okay, great. So, we are up to board discussions. Master plan solar bylaw and the driveways and entrances. I know Adam sent us some text about driveways and entrances, I don't know if there's other things people want to hit on tonight, or Adam, if there's anything you wanted to share on any of those in particular?
Uh, no, I mean, master plan, we had the.
Oh, we did have that sent.
The forum, it was attended.
Boily.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, I did have my check-in with the consultants today, they were rather enthused about the discussions that were had, they felt that they were good discussions. Their words were, we don't want to have those type of discussions every time, but we felt that was a really rich and informed discussion that they felt helped them. So, they're going to put together a community engagement plan to try and draw more people out. I have sent some of the QR codes and paper surveys to the town beach, hoping, hoping that, you know, the folks that recreate may not be the same folks we see here and at other meetings, and that might be a way to get some people, at least getting their voice heard, if not interested and enthused. So I expect in the next week or two to hear from the consultants on the engagement plan. I would expect, I'm still waiting for two more committees to forward their representatives on the steering committee. And at that point, I would look to schedule a steering committee meeting mid-July, early September, to really start to pick up some steam then. And if there's anyone out in TV land, or if you folks know anyone who's interested in one of the six at-large positions, that's a, those are all open, but I think getting the steering committee started might actually engender more people to want to come out and you know, see what it's all about, either because they don't like what we're saying, and they think that they should be heard, or because it looks like we're having fun, and they want to, they want to play along and party with us. So, the, you know, summer's always a hard time to really get stuff rolling. So if we start to really pick up as the school year happens, that's when people are starting to come back, be engaged, and be present, and hopefully, we can use the superintendent to blast all the parents in town that this is happening, and maybe get them involved in youth sports and whatnot. So, we'll see how that goes along. I don't have anything on solar, I know that I have had a couple of conversations with, I think, you, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
And with the new building commissioner relative to just solar in general, and how every solar bylaw is kind of wonky, and ours has some definite foibles, and, and maybe there's some ways that we can look at how to not even make it easier, make it more sensical in the way we apply it. You know, I think, for me, I don't, you know, the large-scale solar stuff, the bylaws fine that we have, you know, I think we could do more to disincentivize deforestation. But I think the residential scale stuff is where we actually put the public at a disadvantage, because we're using nameplate capacity, and you could have a five K and a fourteen K system that are only marginally different in size, and one would be allowed and one wouldn't, because we limit to ten on ground-mounted for all applications. So it might be something that I bring to the board about removing the nameplate capacity and tying it to use on-site. You know, matching it to the, the needed load at the house, and, you know, having a maximum footprint size that is residential-friendly. Because, you know, if, if somebody comes in and says, oh, I've got, I've got a seventy-five KW system, well, what are you doing at your house that you need that much? But, you know, the variance between ten and fourteen and eighteen is all within that realm of what someone would theoretically need for a house. But, I don't have, that's more just a stream of consciousness than anything right now.
I, when I was at the office, I, I did speak with Adam the other day about solar. And it got in my head thinking, now, to make sure I understand the conversation you and I had correctly, Adam. Do we current, does I, our bylaw currently allow parking lots solar?
It does not.
Okay, that, that's what I gathered from it, but I realized I wanted to make sure I had that correct before I was.
I, I say it does not, I guess that would be an interpretation thing, it does allow roof-mounted solar by right, because we have to. So, what qualifies as a roof, and if somebody puts something up in a parking lot, I mean, I think it could be clearer. And that, you're right, I, I had actually forgotten we spoke about that specific one.
And that was just something that came to me with, I don't know if any, the closest one I've been to, I don't know if any of y'all have been to Haywood Hospital, where their, their parking lot by the hospital is all, all solar now, has been for a few years. And, from a customer standpoint, pulling up somewhere you go, and it's all covered parking? It's pretty nice, from an ecological standpoint, we're not only not deforesting to make a solar farm then, but you're covering up a blacktop. So you're limiting heat island effect. From a, I mean, really, kind of from a letting people do what they want and being business-friendly standpoint, that's something that could open, open up new revenue streams to, well, I say to businesses, I mean, to landowners in this case. But opening up new revenue streams to them in terms of if they could, if it was economically advantageous for them, allowing them to do solar. And, I mean, we have some smaller parking lots in town that could maybe still benefit, I don't know all the rules, and we have some huge parking lots in town. That was, that was something that, when I found out that we likely don't allow it, I, I think I would be interested in, as we kind of look at a so, the idea of a solar bylaw, really making it explicit and trying to make that a doable thing, but that's just my opinion, I didn't know what others might think about that one way or another.
I've never heard of it before, park, parking lot solar, is that what you?
Yeah, it's, it's literally big solar panels to make roofs over lines of parking.
Elevated panels.
It's, it's a, it's a eighteen or twenty-foot solar rack that you put up over parking spaces. If you've ever been to the REI in Framingham, they've had them there for a decade or more now.
Yeah.
All of the new DOT, like, office buildings all have the same.
So you, I don't know all the engineering terms, but you've got, the way I've seen it always, is you've got your standard, it looks like a fish spine, right, like with the ribs coming off of your parking, and everyone kind of goes in, I, I don't know how, how else to describe it, your normal parking setup, where people pull in from either aisle, and then that is just covered overhead by a line of solar.
So I, I can certainly see the, the potential benefit of it, I would definitely love to hear more information about it, but I think, at the end of the day, it's still ground-mounted solar, right?
Mm-hmm.
And, and as Adam said, we, we can't regulate the roof-mounted solar, that's regulated elsewhere. If, so, in our regulations, we regulate ground-mounted solar for ten KW or anything larger than that, and small and large. So I certainly couldn't conceive the potential benefit of adding another category in there. You know, potentially reworking the numbers that we currently have in the two categories. I'd definitely be open to that. Sounds like a good idea.
Well, here.
Anything that moves towards using the space that they were, that we already have, instead of utilizing new space for solar panels is.
Oh, maybe, maybe we could work something in, like, like the Waylem, Waylem Drive-In, it was a.
So here's a target with.
Okay.
Parking lot solar.
Beautiful.
So here's the store, obviously, and this is just your standard parking lot with these solar roofs put up over it. So, and I get what you're saying, it's just, it's just more ground-mounted solar, but it's ground-mounted solar on already pervious, impervious area that actually reduces heat island, because it's not reflecting back up, the panels are absorbing it, and taking that, that heat island and doing something with it.
Right, but currently, our bylaw would not differentiate it.
So it, it would essentially be eliminating some, or altering some of the metrics, some of the, the dimensional requirements, I mean, if you're putting this, if, I mean, the obvious one is Walmart and, and Hanaford, you know, if, if Brixmore decided, let's do it, you know, we're going to have to knock off the two-hundred-foot setbacks, we would have to talk about, you know, some of the other things that are in there, some of the screening and stuff, but at the same time, you're already working in a disturbed and you know, turned area, and this has a potential to add another benefit to it.
Or we could create a third category and.
Yeah, well, that, yes, that's what I mean, so it would be a third category that just takes away some of those other things, and and maybe you do want to do it by right, I don't know what that's about. Rather than do it as a special permit, and that way, folks can just do it under certain criteria, and as long as it meets these things, and, and obtains building permit and that kind of stuff. You know, I don't have the answers to it now, but those are just some of the things that, that jump out at me as, as we would need to look at.
And I would just echo what Mr. Wilsner said about that, being able to leverage space that is already developed is pretty fantastic, from my opinion, I just think that, that's a win for pretty close to everybody in a situation like this. All right, and.
And then I, I, Mr. Brenner and I talked, and I said I'd have an outline of a, a common driveway, and I just went ahead and I was able to actually bang out what I think is a reasonable proposal to start with. So, it, it, I don't expect any discussion about it tonight. I tried to put something together that was relatively concise. You know, there are a couple of bylaws out there that are twelve, eighteen pages, and I, I said, I don't know that we need that. We have a special permit procedure, let's talk about what we think makes sense, some design criteria, and go from there. I think I only hit this into your inbox today, so I don't expect anyone to have read it. But, just some, some food for thought, and maybe the next time we meet, we can have a discussion about what you think. I've also sent it to the building commissioner and the DPW director for comments, I expect there'll be some significant comment, and. I expect there'll be some significant comment and, you know. Nothing needs to stay the same, everything's, it's really just a place to start with and build from.
All right. Thank you. If I may add, like to actually, I would like to loop back quickly to master plan on the discussion. Just because I want to say out loud for our fellow townspeople listening at home. If you have the opportunity, or really when, because we do. When you have the opportunity to engage in these meetings. It's really worthwhile, and I don't just mean for the benefit of the town, which is the primary benefit. But the amount of cerebral discussion that was happening in that room. About the future of the town was very interesting. Our consultants, I thought, did a pretty great job for people coming in. They really kind of laid out some key aspects of the town. And they had some, what I felt were valuable insights. And they were also very open when members of the public present. Shared why they thought those insights might, might not quite mesh with reality. They were very open to that feedback as well. So I would strongly encourage our friends watching and listening at home to get involved with this process. And come to other public forums and engage with the survey and everything else because they're really looking for that info. And it's, more voices seems to be distinctly making the process better. Anything else on board discussions? All right. We have minutes approval for 6:12 and 6:15.
There were no minutes for 6:15, that was a.
Okay.
That was put in error. Because it was a public forum, I think there was an inference that it was a board meeting and it wasn't.
Okay, I'm glad you said that because I read that and I went, ooh, I missed a set of minutes.
No.
All right.
I'm glad I hadn't zoned out for the minutes discussion.
I think you were about to have a few questions.
I move that we approve the minutes of 6:12, 23.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Very good. Onward to committee reports. We've already heard about the open space ad hoc committee unless Mr. Ellison, you have anything else to share?
No, I'll just repeat that I wasn't, wasn't able to attend the meeting, so.
All right, Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
There is no report, happy June 19th.
Very good. Agricultural Commission.
We, we met at seven o'clock when you guys were meeting at seven o'clock here for the kickoff for the master plan. We met briefly just to approve an amount and a recipient for donations from our market bags. We got, excuse me, we got farmer's market bags, we ordered 100 of them for $9.06 each. And the unanimous decision was to donate $3 from the $10 sale of each bag to four each. And I think that was, that was a.
These canvas tote bags?
Canvas tote, yep. So farmer's market, we've had four markets, I believe, already. I think we've gone from seven to eight to 10 to 12 vendors. So each week, I believe, we've increased. And we're expecting to further increase in the coming times. We've also had entertainment at every market. So far, so good. I don't think we have anything scheduled, but we're still working on it for next Sunday.
Great. Capital Planning Committee. Capital Planning Committee has not met, wrong season. Economic Development Committee was scheduled to meet last Thursday. The meeting was postponed to this coming Thursday. And was that a quorum issue or a, I didn't see a reason.
It was both, it was, there was quorum and folks were going to attend the open meeting law training.
Yep. All right, so that's been shifted to this Thursday. Stormwater, oh, yep, Stormwater Task Force.
I don't think there was a meeting, I forgot to check up on that and make sure there wasn't.
We had postponed because it would have been the same night as the forum, so we'll pick up in July.
There we go, okay.
Excellent. MRPC.
MRPC, we have not met since the previous meeting. MJTC, we met on the 14th. Lots of good details from them. Talking about ongoing projects with, with bridges and bridge safety all over the state. And they were talking about the need for multimodal transportation usage in different communities. And they were looking at the population changes of communities and where more transportation was going to be needed. Meaning not cars, meaning more MART systems or more bicycle lanes or however. They're deciding that their, each community would like to change their modes of transportation and increase them.
Excellent, thank you. Directors items.
There's nothing listed.
There's nothing listed, so I do want to make the board aware, there was some trees cut at 360 Flat Hill Road last week. A new homeowner hired a landscaping crew to cut back the brush and they cut more than they should have. Approximately five trees. I have to go back out and make sure that there weren't more on the other side of the driveway. The homeowner was spoken with, they pled ignorance and have been sent the. Sent a letter and the application to retroactively file. They did indicate they would be willing to. Plant trees in mitigation for those that were removed. So I'm awaiting their application, it was sent out, their, their letter was sent out last week. We'll have to go from there when they, they come in front of the board. And that sort of leans into another. Issue, I guess, is what you would call it. We have four scenic roads and we have no recourse when something like this happens. Because the statute allows for the designation of a scenic road and the creation of a scenic road bylaw. But doesn't tie scenic roads back to a fine. So. We, the board, and I have talked previously about a scenic road bylaw. And there, at the time, wasn't an appetite for it. Now it seems that this is probably a more important or more prominent thing that the board may be willing or interested in pursuing. So I started doing some research on some scenic road bylaws and will have something for the board in the next, you know, week or so. With at least some examples that I think potentially have some merit to moving forward with. I think my favorite one that I've seen, and it shocked me, was Conquered. It was a half a page, it listed the scenic roads, it tied them to the fines. And it gave the planning board the right or the authority to promulgate regulations for the application. So essentially what you do is you're now permitting the town to find. And the regulations are outside of town meeting for the board to determine how the applications and mitigation happen. So it gives you the ability to shift and be nimble as things don't work and not have to wait for the, the cycle of town meeting. But that is something that will be, will be coming.
I had the interesting, we can discuss this, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you can't make a decision on it, but it's something that was unanticipated by the chair.
Okay. I had the realization, Adam brought this cutting to my attention. And I had the realization that, well, twice in the past year, we've had people. Well, soon to be twice as this one comes forward, of people effectively coming forward and saying, whoops. Which, to me, speaks to a need for education, I don't know what that would look like, and potentially enforcement. But the other thing I realized is great, we have an owner saying, oh, well, I'll replant trees, and that's wonderful. And I think that is what should be happening at a minimum. But they plant trees that are less than six inches in diameter. And therefore could be cut down the next year because they're not subject to scenic road. I, is that kind of thing as well? And I don't say this to throw this particular owner under the bus either. It's a, if they were to sell and someone else takes the property. They don't necessarily even know or care about, about, you know, good faith agreements made by previous owners. Those are just all thoughts I have in the scenario that. Because I like, I like the scenic road rules, I like them. I, I think they're imperative for keeping Lunenburg feeling rural. And I, I've expressed to this board before, my personal opinion that I would rather see a scenario where. Trees that are cut down under the scenic road provisions. That they would have to be replaced rather than, well, because otherwise a scenic road provision just. Eventually slows down the inevitable of no more trees along the road.
Is there anything in terms of like buying property on a scenic road where they are informed, like during the purchase process or anything like that? You know, these trees are protected as per the town, no?
No, and I mean, really, if you're cutting trees down in the town right of way, you should have permission from the town.
Sure.
So, I mean, the landscaper who did the cutting should have gone to the DPW and said. Hey, I'm working in your right of way. FYI. Do you have, you know, is there anything I shouldn't do? And I know that one of the homes down the way. It happened to be a local landscaping contractor, but they had, after the homeowner purchased the house, they called and said, we can't see when we pull out of our driveway. There's all of this bushy stuff. And I said, if it's under six inches, if it's undergrowth, you can cut it back. I said, but, you know, call the DPW and make sure that they're, you know, aware that you're doing it. And their landscape contractor called them and said, hey, and he said, yeah, you just don't take the trees, you gotta do this. And, and this person hired someone from, I guess, out of town and they came in and just hack and slash.
Yeah, it, it does feel like if we're going to have. Rules about the trees on scenic roads, those rules should have some kind of teeth. It shouldn't just be a, oh, you shouldn't have done that. Oh, well.
But the, the state has given us the ability to designate scenic roads. But to do anything about that then lies on. You know, after designation lies on the town, so, yeah. All right, any other thoughts?
One thought I had had about scenic roads is back when the previous police chief was trying to wrangle with the speed limit and speed posting. And I suggested that, you know, there have been towns that have designated all their roads as scenic roads. And I didn't know if that would have some potential and he kind of liked that, but there is that thought as well. That would add considerably to the cumbersome nature of our meetings. However, it would provide some protection, given that we created a bylaw to actually support what we tell people. Would, you know, try to actually do something about keeping and improving our scenic town agriculture and farming and all that.
It's funny, the chair made a similar suggestion to me earlier today.
I was in the office.
Amazing.
Earlier today and said, man, Adam, you know what I wish we did? And the reason being that I think the potential is there for us to craft a bylaw. That is very clear and easy to follow. That isn't particularly onerous for, for the people of this town to look at and go, oh, okay. And wouldn't necessarily create a huge burden on this board that would get in the way of other business. But if, we hear a lot that people want Lunenburg to maintain its rural feel. And to do that, we have to protect that aspect of it. I would be fully on board with something like that, just, I, I know, I have a feeling you would be in the same boat. But simply making sure we're thoughtful about how we did it so that. So that we were creating the best level of protection with the minimum level of intrusiveness. But I feel fairly confident there's a line there somewhere that can be found.
I mean, I will say in the scenic road bylaws that I have looked at, I mean, some will go back to the 70s. But it's not unusual to see 20, 25, 40 roads listed in some of these bylaws. So it's not like you would be some wild outlier who went and designated all of these roads this, this way. You know, I don't know that there's anyone that did the entire town, but, I mean. It's not, I think, completely wild. I mean, I think that if you really looked at the town, you could probably pull a few areas and say, you know what? That doesn't make sense to include this road or that road or this. I mean, frankly, Wayland is scenic in its own way, but it's not, it's, it's a different development pattern. And there isn't a bulk of street trees there. But, you know, you go to Goodrich, Flat Hill, Reservoir, Northfield, you know, the areas around Hickory, West Town, Townsend Harbor. Those all have that, that same less dense, more foresty feel.
And to piggyback on what you'd said, as far as it being intrusive to homeowners, it's not their land. It's not their land, it's the town's land.
No, I, yeah, no.
And I kind of wish that more people would understand it that way. I really do. And I actually wish the town would understand it that way too. But, so much for wishing.
I, I don't disagree with a single word you just spoke.
Thank you.
Let me be more direct, I emphatically agree with everything you said, rather than. Any other thoughts?
Are we going to start working on accountability and proactiveness?
That would, all those, those words are music to my ears.
So happy to hear.
All right, meeting schedule. Looking ahead. All meetings are at 6:00 PM unless otherwise noted. And we have meetings coming up on July 10th and July 24th. And I don't think we have to, I mean, that's there so everyone knows, hooray. All right, we have our ongoing items.
I think we've touched on everything that I have in there. Municipal Buildings hasn't met recently, have they met?
No, we were supposed to, it was June 19th.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, so the Aquafer Protection District, that'll be the next bylaw that I, I pump out and that should come out probably early next week.
Great, thank you. And Adam, if you don't, once you get it into our.
Yeah, I'll let you all know what's in the drive.
Yeah, if you let us know what's in the drive, because that. Yeah, if you let us know what's in the drive, because that triggers me to, at least to go actually look at it and give comments.
Yeah, I didn't finish the common driveways till today, so that's why you got it today. And, and I'll say this for all of you. If you read something I send you and you're like, I've just got to tell him about this, or even if you just have comments, you're like, oh, I'm going to bring these up at the meeting, send them to me ahead of time so I can at least be ready to answer your questions if you have them or, or have an alternative if you don't like some language. I'm happy to, again, talk about them in public, but I can come and we can be productive about it if I have it ahead of time.
Conveniently, I already have notes I put down on the common driveway, so I'll send those along.
All right.
I may flesh them out because why, question mark with an arrow, could maybe get more thoughts to it, but...
That's good enough for me sometimes.
Okay, great. Public comment. This is your chance. That was your chance. All right. Board comment or concerns?
I'll, I'll say something about the notification for new residents that came up on the pub, on the, on the scenic road. Ever since the Agricultural Commission put together and the town voted on the right-to-farm bylaw, there has been a bylaw in town that has been ignored as far as new resident notification. My understanding is that we are supposed to notify new residents that this is a right-to-farm community and that the realtors are supposed to be doing that to their clients. And I have yet to ever hear of anything similar to that. So that's what made me think of, well, that's what, how are we going to notify? So it, again, it all starts with the town and it's not the blowhards up here talking all night long that we're elected, we're appointed, we're not paid, we're not staffed, we're not, we're not in charge of anything really, quite honestly. So if the town could get its stuff together and actually coordinate to follow through and do what our bylaws say, I think that would be awesome.
Here, here. Just for the, the, oh, sorry, if that topic's done, I don't want to...
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Just for the sake for the board, so the board knows. I, the current plan is I'm meeting with Adam on generally the Wednesdays before our meetings to go over the agenda and everything. Not, I mean, everyone on the board can and should talk to Adam directly, but by the same token, letting you know that happens in case you want to put something on my radar as well. That's, we have a standing meeting Wednesdays at 11:00 to go over the agenda for the upcoming meeting, so I have a, have a clue what's going on sometimes. FYI.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah. In which case, with no other comments or concerns seen, I would accept an emotion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's it.